Good morning. It's 9:30 a.m., Tuesday, June 28th. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, and we've got minutes of June 21st?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, open to public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. We have our resolutions. County Engineers' Office, Dan Becker. How are you this morning?
Oh, great. Glad to be here.
Glad you're here.
Really.
We're glad you're going to shut down more roads.
I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first is accepting and awarding the bid for the Chippewa Lake Main Drive reconstruction project in Lafayette Township. And the second is necessity to close Firestone Road between Jeffries Road and Williams Road. And then our weekly permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Dan, when's the construction in Chippewa going to start?
That is a great question. I have the contracts already to the contractor. We're hoping to start maybe by the beginning of August.
Are they going to do the bridge before that? Or as part of it?
That depends more on Mac Construction. They're constructing the box pieces right now. They told us that they would be done at the end of July. So whoever gets in first. We're hoping that the bridge can go first.
Got it.
But it'll depend on the paving contractor when he wants to come in. They're both aware. They're both working in there, so.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
You're good.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. He wants to get out of here quick. Jeremy Sinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for consideration today. First is authorizing the sanitary engineer to request qualifications for professional design services to design and provide construction management services for the Medina Road sanitary sewer replacement project. And the second is amending the agreement with GPD Group Service or for professional design services for the Solid Waste District's residential campus. They have a subcontractor helping with the estimate of the project, and we've increased the scope without project a little bit, so that just resulted in more work for that subcontractor.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Very good.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy. Ali Muren, our human resources director. Good morning.
Good morning, Ali.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires at Job and Family Services, eight rate increases, three in sanitary, three at Job and Family Services, one in building, and one at County Home, one fund change in finance, two resignations, one in sanitary and one in maintenance, and one deceased in maintenance. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for the Medina County Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brilliant.
Thank you so much.
I did have one. Did we post those jobs yet?
No.
Okay.
After this.
All right. Very good. Next, Amy Lyon-Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have 11 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2022 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third and fourth resolutions are expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fifth is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds for the costs of the county's insurance policies. The sixth is creation of a board of elections, August primary grant fund, and authorizing those appropriations. The seventh is authorizing the purchase of 6,500 gallons of regular unleaded gas for the engineering center that went to Port's Petroleum for $3.73 per gallon. The eighth is adopting the Internal Revenue Service mileage reimbursement rate. If you recall, we'll typically, at the start of the year, amend this each year to reflect the current IRS-published rate. This resolution not only adopts the change in rate effective July 1st of 2022, so it's going from 58.5 cents to 62.5 cents per mile for our mileage reimbursement, but it will allow us to stay consistent with IRS if they make a change. This resolution allows us to automatically adopt that change, and then Finance can communicate that out to the departments.
Okay.
The ninth resolution is authorizing continued legal services with Bricker and Eckler. This is to support the ARPA funding request that they continue to review on our behalf. The 10th is authorizing funding of the Medina County Fiber Network Fiber Densification Project with the ARPA dollars. If you recall, back in January, there was a resolution with this board entering into an agreement with the Board of Authority. This is just solidifying the allocation of the $11 million in that commitment. The 11th resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the 12th is approving claims for the week in the amount of $5,051,389.13.
I'll make a motion to approve the 12 resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you. Well, before, if you don't mind, before we do the department updates, Krista Wazowski, our Health Director, is here. Did you want? Okay, you can do it. Yeah. Trying to save you some time, I guess.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to stop in this morning to let you know my office will be forwarding down to you some action taken by the Board of Health last night. As you know, our levy did not pass in May, and the board had to make some hard decisions about what we need to do to move forward. So after discussion and consideration of kind of the current economics that we're in and what's happening in the world, we decided, they decided, to place a renewal-only on the ballot. So that request is going to be coming down to you, and we'll ask you to then take the steps to officially place that onto the November ballot. So the board knows, it's a 10-year levy. The board knows that it's not the funding that the agency needs within those 10 years. But looking at projections, we'll be fine for a few years, and we'll just have to decide, make adjustments, work with the community on what they want to see from their Health Department and where things are in the world when we get to that point. So I just wanted to let you know that.
I just wanted to thank you and the board for taking the time to evaluate. I know that you went out in the community, talked to a lot of people.
I did.
And you're evaluating and taking seriously what the voters have communicated.
Yes.
Which we all have to do. But likewise, looking long-term, but recognizing that in the next several years, probably have to revisit the issue of funding based upon, I guess, what's going on at the state as well as locally.
And anything can happen in those few years. We just have to be responsive to our voters now. And honestly, they looked very carefully and considered replacing and reducing. That was an option. But as you all know, by doing a replacement, that loses that taxpayer savings of the 12.5 cents that the state kicks in on every dollar. And although it would have still, a replace and reduce would have brought in the same amount of money to the agency and given them for the full 10 years what we needed, that didn't feel right to anyone at the Health Department because we have an obligation to our citizens to help protect their health, but also to do it in the most cost-effective way that we can. And so that's why they decided to go just with the renewal, keep the 12.5 cent per dollar protection for the taxpayer, and then just figure it out and see where we are.
All right. Thank you. I think it was the best decision.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have department updates. Debbie Kylie, Job and Family Services. I think you have a resolution here as well. A couple.
We actually have four of them for your consideration this morning. The first is just a resolution for the county auditor to transfer funds from the Ohio Start Grant to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. The next is for the county auditor to transfer funds from the County General Fund to the Public Assistance Fund. The next is just accepting and awarding an agreement with recruitment and mentoring services for our foster families. And lastly, is a resolution authorizing an agreement to replace the door access system at the JFS building using ProTech services.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And department updates. Public assistance.
I thought you were going to hand me something.
No, no, I need these.
Okay. All right. Well, you can give them to me, and I can see if you do it right.
See how well I have it committed to memory. So as the war in Ukraine continues, Ukrainian citizens continue to flee to the United States, and that does include Medina County. I think we've got about 10 families in Brunswick and surrounding areas. Previously, we couldn't help them with any sort of public assistance benefits. They just didn't qualify. But Congress, I believe, last month authorized assistance for those Ukrainians that are paroled. Paroled sounds bad, but it's just a form of entry into the United States for those citizens between February of 2022 and September of next year, that they'll be authorized to receive some of our public assistance benefits. There's still certain eligibility requirements. Like if they want to apply for TANF, they have to have dependent children. So it's not an all-in. So I would just strongly suggest that anyone from that country that's fleeing and has arrived in Medina County to call our agency, and we can discuss what benefits they need, what documents they need to provide in order to get those benefits. And part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 authorized pandemic SNAP benefits for children that were eligible for or enrolled in the Free School Lunch Program, Free or Reduced School Lunch Program. Part of that act also allowed that to continue in the summer months of 2021 when those children were removed from those programs. The state of Ohio has authorized that to begin again in the summer, and it will be for two months for those that are school age. So they don't have to be in school. They just had to have been previously eligible for that program or enrolled in. So any child that's aged six years and greater who are eligible while they were in school, they're going to receive two installments, actually, in a couple of days, the end of June and then the end of July. And that will cover that summer month when they're removed from those free lunch programs. If they've already received SNAP benefits in a current household, the dollars that they'll receive will be put on those current cards. So they'll just arrive on the household card. If they're not identified as part of that current population that's receiving SNAP benefits, some families don't apply for those programs, and those children are eligible, the child will actually receive a SNAP benefit card in its name to the household address that the school had. So the state of Ohio and the schools are working together to identify who those children are.
So the families themselves don't have to do?
Nope.
They don't have to apply for anything or do anything? They'll just get it if they're eligible?
You got it.
Got it.
Yep. Public assistance by the numbers. Our SNAP participants, speaking of, are about 9,300 residents for SNAP, and we're issuing about $2.7 million a month. Our TANF participants were about 353 and issuing over $85,000 benefits per month. And our Medicaid participants, we continue to maintain about 26,000 recipients in Medina County. Child protective by the numbers. Last month, the Division took in over 220 reports of abuse and neglect. We have 122 children in care. 20 of them are in facilities or other institutional care, and the balance are in foster homes or relative placements. We haven't yet certified any new foster homes this month, which is surprising because we were on pace doing about one or two a month. But we have 56 homes that are certified for Medina's protective program. And child support by the numbers. Year-to-date, the Division has collected over $13 million in current support payments and collected over $1.7 million in past due arrears payments. And then just agency-wide news. To better utilize the space that JFS has available with our Work From Home efforts, I've been working with James Fox from Community Action Wayne Medina to see if he could move part of his Medina team into our building. We've done several walkthroughs of the building, and we've determined that it's a viable space not only for his team, my team, but also the community as well. We work with so many common clients that having us in the same location just makes good business sense because all those different documentations that we're asking clients to go to Community Action and get that, or Community Action is saying, "Go to JFS and get this," now they can just pick up the phone and we're downstairs or upstairs, whatever the case might be. We don't yet have a move-in date. There are a lot of moving parts in order to make this happen, but I'm certain it will happen by the end of the year. And we're excited and grateful for that opportunity to better serve our community. I'm excited for that. And Community Action comes with a great camaraderie that I look forward to. They get along well. They have a great energy. So they'll fit in just fine with JFS. And lastly, one more piece of agency news. As I had mentioned to you back in October of last year, Cheryl Scheck, our current Business Administrator, she is retiring with 30-plus years in the JFS system. She's going to retire probably early spring of next year. And part of that succession planning in May of this year, I brought in an Assistant Business Administrator to shadow Cheryl, begin assisting her with those duties, and eventually take over those fiscal responsibilities. So Steve Sikora has joined me today. He comes to us from Delaware County JFS. He was their former fiscal officer. So he's no stranger to the unique aspect that is JFS accounting. He's, like I said, assisting Cheryl with those various activities and learning Medina County's ways. But interestingly enough, Steve was with Medina County Child Protective Services about 11-ish years ago. However. So he's no stranger to Medina County. He has come back home. So I just wanted to welcome Steve to the board and to everyone else here.
Understand, look for a house in Wasworth?
We did. We just bought, yes.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Amy, for giving me the heads up.
Wasworth is cool.
All our cities and townships are cool.
That's true. That is true. That is true. Those are my updates. Any questions?
All right.
Good?
Very good.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
122 children in care. That's the highest number I can ever remember in the six years I've been here.
Yeah, almost. It was probably two or three months ago. We were at 136.
Okay.
Ouch.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot.
So you're still looking for foster parents?
All the time. Yeah, all the time. We're really looking for foster parents now that will take children that are, I would say, eight and older. The zero-to-seven population, we are plentiful in that area. So we're looking for families that can take those, not only those older children, but some that come with higher therapeutic needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Shannon Reiner, Transit Director. You have an update?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am going to hand you something, Bill.
There we are. I was waiting for that.
I'm going to pass that down. Steve has seen that. I'm going to start off with some OHM, our strategic planning and our advisement. We worked really hard to examine the best way to reach the community. The survey is the best way. The questions that are on the survey, and I'm going to hold up a poster. I don't usually do this, but I'm going to do this. A very large poster that's going to be put out in many areas. If you need one of these in the community, we've already gotten them out to several agencies, Job and Family. You know, Steve asked a very good question earlier. How are we going to reach the outskirts? We're going to do that. We really want a lot of response from the survey, the transit survey. I know there's been surveys before. I think this looks at it from a different angle. Some of the same questions I've seen, but some new ones, I hope. So we really are excited about trying to get the word out about what we're going to do based on the feedback we get. So really excited about that. So more to come. I think we'll have that out for a month, six weeks or so, to give enough chance for everybody. So as far as our monthly update, our loop service is really, you know, has gone down significantly over the last couple of months. Couple of different reasons. Heat, maybe. I think about, I hear the passengers say heat. I think about economic conditions in the area and where folks are traveling. Are they traveling as much? Our demand service continues to remain pretty steady. More demand out there. So everything seems to be pretty much the trend on a statewide basis, a lot of the transit agencies around the area. Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, even the smaller ones are seeing the fixed route. Their loop service kind of go down a little bit. I've heard the number's 23%, 24% in some regions. So we're making sure we run that service, but we're responding to the need of the medical trips. Those demand services, the critical services out there continue to be pretty strong. I look very carefully at the cost per mile. That's mainly because of fuel. We also, you know, have made sure that we have enough service out there, but we're really making sure we run the service we need and not the service we do just to run the service. So we're looking at the cost per mile going up over $4. That's the highest I've seen it, cost per mile. So that's an indicator that we need to be very careful. We are looking at some different fueling options for our agency in partnering with the county. That's going to take some time, but I think it'll help. Hopefully, the gas prices go down a little bit for us, too. So I will report that down the line there, we got up to 18% of our totals passes and ticket sales. At 18% for our easy fare now. We had a goal of 50%. It's slowly climbing. With the survey, with the partnership with OHM, we hope to see some improvements in our electronic fare media. That just helps us so much with people knowing what our service is and what it isn't. It's a lot. It's very important to them. A couple of the things I really want to educate the public on what we're doing. This is the best place to do it. But I said this in a recent meeting for our strategic plan. I haven't seen this much support for transit in a very long time. So I'm very happy to see all agencies engaged, officers for adults, the Board of Disabilities very engaged, Job and Family. Everybody's interested in trying to help us get better. So I think the awareness is going up. Lot more questions coming into our office asking me, "What is, what can you do for me?" It's taken a lot of effort, but it's the right work, right? So really happy about that. The last thing I'll leave you with is, I think some of our challenges, we always have challenges. Fleet is something we're looking at, trying to make sure that we can order the right vehicles. I reported earlier that we applied for five vehicles purchased. We only received money for one. Buying one vehicle wouldn't be advantageous. We just completed our grant. We're waiting for the award for seven of those vehicles, adding to that one, so eight vehicle purchase will give us a bit more buying power. Crossing our fingers that we can get those vehicles within a certain amount of time. The state contract says 180 days. That's really unrealistic. It's more like 365-plus. So, but we need to order vehicles. We partner with our maintenance department. Stevens Group does a good job of keeping our fleet going, but it needs help. The other thing is a big, and a big one for us, is hiring drivers. Trying to, you know, we post things out there. We're on Indy, things like that. We've gotten some responses. A lot of folks want full-time. I think that's what I'm hearing the most. They want a full-time position with us. I do have an interview this afternoon at 2:00 with somebody that was a former school bus driver. She's fine with three or four days a week. So we're still trying to find that niche. But it's a challenge to find people. We all know that. But in transit, it is critical to have the right people and the right amount of people.
Okay. All right.
That's where we're at so far.
Thank you, Shannon. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Fazio, our EMA Director. Good morning.
I handed everybody at their location my summary for the last number of months, including a PowerPoint presentation. So a lot going on at EMA since the start of the year. We are glad that Weber-Murphy Fox has been to Chippewa a number of weeks ago to do 3D imaging of the interior and the exterior of the building. So we're anticipating some drawings, renovation proposals in the next couple of weeks. That's something that we've been waiting for for a number of years. That's something that we've been waiting for, for a number of years. Chief Rob Haas from Sharon Township applied for a grant with the Hillier Foundation. They're a Sharon-based foundation that's no longer in existence. They wanted to close their doors after this round of applications, unfortunately. But Chief Haas submitted for forty thousand dollars for dive capability, training and equipment. And the Hillier Foundation, we were completely shocked that they sent us a check for a hundred thousand dollars. Amazing. So a lot of funding for the All Hazards Team for the future with that additional sixty thousand dollars.
So that, that goes beyond just the dive portion? It goes beyond the other, like rope?
Most certainly. Yeah. So the extra sixty thousand goes into just the cash balance for the All Hazards Team in general.
That's awesome.
Yeah. It is amazing. So dive is expensive. It's something that we've put off. We didn't want to have to fund that capability, but with just the events that go on around the county, we've been doing mutual aid outside of the county. And unfortunately, sometimes the response times are just delayed, too delayed. You want to be able to offer capability locally as fast as possible. So we'll have limited dive capability. We'll see where that goes, but that's something that the team's been looking forward to for quite some time. We've been working on a, this is a tongue twister, Tactical Interoperability Communications Plan, acronym TICP. It's a very basic communications plan, and it's basic because it's a FEMA template. Oftentimes, the things that FEMA puts out are very basic. But we are working with police, fire and EMS across the county to do a more robust, customized tactical interoperable communications plan. So, which leads us to why we want to do that plan. We're working on finalizing a mass casualty, mass fatality plan. Right now, it's in subcommittee with the fire chiefs. Once they're complete with their review, it'll go over to the police chiefs committee for them to do a review. We'll finalize the plan with any recommendations from both of those groups, which then leads us into why we need a mass casualty, mass fatality plan for things like eclipse planning. So you'll see in your PowerPoint presentation, Ohio EMA has been planning for almost a year now for an eclipse that's going to be coming through Medina County, a number of counties, on April eighth of twenty twenty-four. They're planning for a very robust, well, robust isn't probably not the right word, a large quantity of people to come to Medina County, doubling the population. So fourteen minutes of darkness is going to bring us a whole lot of effort and preparedness, planning. So a lot of cascading impacts that are going to result from doubling the population in the county. And the estimate is three hundred and sixty-four thousand people. A lot of logistics that go into managing that quantity of people. We're waiting for some guidance from Ohio EMA. We're talking about things that need to happen, but nobody can really determine exactly what needs to happen. Are there going to be enough porta potties for everybody to go around? Probably not. That's, that's going to be, things like that are going to be big issues for us. So crime is something that they're anticipating. How do you mitigate that? It's going to be a little bit of a challenge. So something to look forward to, not necessarily look forward to, but have to plan for. And then we are working on a fair security plan, something that we do every year, assist the fair board with ensuring that the fair is a safe event, usually the biggest event in the county, a hundred thousand people or so. So.
So what's the date of it?
April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, okay. There it is. Yeah, okay.
The fair is the end of the...
The fair is the first week of August.
Well, I meant the total eclipse thing.
And it's strange that, so, some of the details that come out of eclipse planning is we, we interact often with National Weather Service. So one of their gentlemen happened to visit the two thousand seventeen eclipse that was in Nashville. So he talked about his experience, and while it was a cool experience, the ingress and egress from that event was something that he said he'd never do again. He sat in interstate traffic for seventeen hours.
Really?
And so you're like, the craziness of, you know, some other people's experiences, like, why would anybody, people venture from across, from other countries to come and witness this? So we anticipate the school will be closed that day, which you hope that they would be, because the eclipse is happening around when school, schools get released. But when you're sitting in traffic for seventeen hours, you probably wish that you didn't go. So I just don't know why anybody would go through the effort, but it'll be interesting to see what happens. So I went to the Police Chiefs Association last week and shared some updates with them and then talked to them about the eclipse. And I feel like Police Chief Kenny, Ed Kenny from Medina City was somewhat excited. And I thought, wow, you're excited for this. It's going to be crazy. I am excited for this. He's like, really? That's just really, that's really cool. I didn't hear about this yet. Like, oh, my goodness. Okay. Like, you're going for punishment. But yeah, it'll be exciting. We'll see. We'll see where it goes. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. We don't have any commissioners' resolutions, so open up the public comment. You want to? Yes, sure. Please, all right, please come forward. If you could just give us your name, address for the record, please.
My name is Pat Nemontney. I live at fourteen eighty Sharon Copley Road, which is part of Sharon Township in Medina County. And I have been here before because when it rains and it floods, ninety to ninety-five percent of our two-acre property flood. And I have been begging people to, to do something about this, and I'm getting nowhere. So a couple of weeks ago, Amy and Dan and Neil Jones from the township office and Jennifer Maudette, they came out and they were going to do a site visit. I assumed they wanted to see the basement with the flooding. They declined. Do you want to see our pole barn with the flooding? They declined. Nobody walked to the back corner to see the six inches of water there standing there. So there's an intersection where our driveway goes over our creek, okay? There are two black drainage pipes, I think is what you call them, underneath there. So Dan takes out his tape measure and he measures and he said, these are not the size. They're too small. Okay? These are what we were told to put in in order to have access to our pole barn. So I said, you know what? We could have ten pipes down here, and if you don't clean out the creek, the water's not going to flow down. So then Amy looks at me and she says, we can't clean out the creek. And I said, why not? It's illegal for us to be on private property. That's the dumbest answer I've ever heard. So they leave. I get my little iPad out. I got my iced tea. I start Googling. Would you like to hear what I found? No one owns the water in the county. The water, this is per the State of Ohio website, which is public to anybody. The water must be kept free-flowing at all times. Water has a purpose. Property owner owns the land on either side of the creek and underneath. However, there is an area on either side of the creek, and I'm not quite sure of the word, it's called Rispertal, where the county has, is, has the ability to go on either side to do any maintenance and cleaning out of that creek that is necessary. Now, you, the county has a responsibility to the property owner to tell them they have a functioning creek on their property, that they are responsible for primary maintenance. And the county is to tell them what maintenance is required, i.e. not putting chemicals in there, not putting their grass clipping in, you know, stuff like that. Okay. If the property owner cannot maintain that creek, it is the county's responsibility and the owner to come up with a alternate solution so that the creek can be kept maintained. Water cannot cause harm to property owners upstream or downstream. If damage occurs, the county is responsible for property owner's damage. Now, that breaks down into sections. If the creek is so far in distance of the structure, okay, that, that consists of structural damage, and that's, that's, this is how they break it down. If the water goes inside the dwelling, i.e. basement, whatever, that becomes a separate damage award. There is also, but the federal government allows you to get an award for the exposure to possible mold spores. That includes any person living full-time in that dwelling. And guess what? That accounts for uncaged pets. And my little Shirlene wants a pink studded collar. Now, if the creek is not free-flowing, free-flowing, and becomes stagnant, it becomes a breeding ground for insects, mosquitoes, which become a source of disease. In Ohio, you are not allowed to spray for mosquitoes on or around water. Now, you must also inform the property owner of the importance of vegetation in and around the waterway. There is also, okay, so I can continue on, but those are the bullet points. So.
What was the source of that information?
State of Ohio.
You, what, what department?
There's about five different departments involved. You just have to start Goog, it, I don't know if you've ever Googled anything. I have not, but I'll tell you. It's, it's, this is here, this is here. I even went to the library, to the resource department, because I said, where do I go from here? There is a map available online to tell you the creek's locations, destinations. However, it's a hundred and twenty pages to print out, and you have to piece it back before, so I deny doing that. In my mind, you are negligent in keeping these waterways clean. Oh, backup. You are to provide a scheduled maintenance in the county to make sure that all these creeks are being maintained and are being kept up. You used to do that, and I have a woman who will come here and tell you, her family owned a hundred acres of farming in Medina County. They had cattle and they had, you know, farmland. Every two years, two gentlemen would come out to their property, talk to her dad, they 'd shake hands, they'd walk along the creeks. Now, they had two creeks. They had one for, that was on their property, and they had one that was for the cattle. They checked both of those creeks. Her father signed a form. Two years later, here they come again. And she also said Medina County used to sponsor once a year a symposium on creeks, watersheds, and the maintenance. It was held on Route Forty-two in a building. And it was put on by Ohio State. I asked her if she wasn't sure. She said, no, they had red and gray shirts on, and her brothers were excited because they were from Ohio State. Anyway, the county evidently put posters everywhere, and they encouraged residents to go to this to find out what the creeks and waterways, what they were responsible for. She said that they have not held, that she thinks, about nine years. She was basing that on when her parents sold the property. And she said her father made them go every year because he wanted to know the changes and the updates that they did. So you know, you know that this is a problem, and you're, you're ignoring it. And I don't, I, tell me why. Tell me why you're not, tell me why. I've been there since twenty thirteen. How many people have come on my property to see that that creek is free-flowing? I would have showed them the pictures of the flooding. How many people, how many, how many letters have I gotten informing me how to maintain it? Eric was the only one that said, I clean that creek out every year. He said, no, as long as the vegetation is green in the creek and on the side, you leave that there. That stabilizes the creek. Why don't you do anything about this?
Well, first off, but thank you very much for, for coming again. I know that, as you pointed out, Amy was out there as Dan Will Hoyt, I think, at the township, as well as the soil and water conservation district, Eric Ed. And I'm, I'm afraid the number of statements you've made are, I think, are in error.
Oh.
Well, ma'am, sorry, I'm just, I'm telling you my, my belief. And I know that you, you firmly believe that what you gave us was, places the burden on the county.
I knew you were going to do this. She did the same thing. She blamed us on the land.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is a public meeting, and I gave you your five minutes that you do. And this is one of those issues that I think the county has taken due diligence. We have, provide you with a lot of, with information. This is a private property owner issue. And as much as we're, we're trying to work with the other parts of the community, as well as the township is trying to resolve this issue, I'm, I'm afraid that you're in error in a number of statements.
You're telling me the State of Ohio website is incorrect in the information.
I have no idea what exactly you're referencing, ma'am. The other than say, State of Ohio, I mean, you're literally, if you could give us specific citations, we would be glad to take a look at that. But as far as I'm aware, the part of the information that was provided to us by, by Amy and by others, I'm, I'm sorry that, that you're just not correct.
I can't believe you're sitting there telling me that you don't believe this information and you, and the county is not responsible for this water. I have called the State of Ohio, and I requested a site visitation. I have called the engineers, the engineers, the Army Corps of Engineers, they're coming out for a site visit. I have talked to Neil Jones, and he said, oh, that all sounds familiar to me, but nobody's doing any. How can you sit there and look at me and say, you have, you don't have all this water everywhere, and you're not responsible?
Ma'am, it's, it's not our water, the private, I'll just say, the private property owners have water, they have rights. You have a field across the street, a large agricultural field that it has drainage, has tile, and it, as I understand, dumps a lot of water into that, into that watershed. I'm not a hydrologist. I know enough by, for the reading. And, and I, I, and I know you asked for, for a meeting, and my officer communicated back to you, I would be glad to sit down with you privately, Amy and the rest to talk further about this. I know that you're requested, do we have legal counsel attend that? And I have no intentions on, on doing that. If you want to pursue this legally, that, that's your right. But I'd be glad to sit down and talk with you further, but this, this forum is meant to, and I understand that this is.
Absolutely.
Your very passionate issue. We do have a lot of issues throughout the county when it comes to stormwater, as well as flooding. And we've tried to work with you with the resources we have. We're not a municipality. We, we have a jurisdiction and only limited authority that the state gives us. Thank you.
Trust me, this isn't over yet.
Any other public?
Do you just absolutely believe that you just pull on Facebook, but you don't believe in State of Ohio website?
If you can give me the specific references, I'll be glad to look at them.
Why don't you sit down and have one of your people go through all that website and check the information that I gave you?
Thank you.
You pay two professional engineers to come up to my balcony, tell me it's my fault. What a joke. You're all a joke.
I'm sorry. All right. Is there anyone else, public comment? All right. Enter discussion. Should I start with Jeremy first? That way, you always have something, right?
Well, you're not wrong.
Do you have anything fun first?
How about the Chippewa Lake Village?
There you go.
They have a road replace, road replacement project on Brook Shore Drive between Rock Ridge and Beachside. So we, I'd like to, like we did similarly last year, get our utilities replaced with their road project. I got a price from, what was it? From their design engineer. It was forty-nine hundred bucks for the design, so I was gonna, if you're okay to do that, and then we'll work on the memorandum of understanding between the, us and the village similar last year. So Columbia Road Project, done. So we do have some plantings that, I think there's about, I'm gonna say seventy-five to a hundred one-gallon trees slash shrubs that need to get installed yet. They're gonna wait until the end of summer. Yeah, to get those planted. But other than that, everything else is completed, so we're just working on final quantities right now. And then the last item I have here is there are a company called Envelope that was recommended by Stephen here. They are looking, a lot of our desk cubicle walls are thirty-plus years old, and with staffing changes and all that through the years, we're trying to figure out how to better utilize the space that we have. So we did initial, we did an initial contract for them to kind of lay out a design for us and what it would look like. We met with them, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and they provided a proposal for us for twenty-five thousand dollars. That was to design, to write the technical specs, help us bid, provide construction administration. And just wanted to make sure that that was, that you didn't have any issues with us. This is really to help provide a nicer, better work environment for our employees at the office, so.
So Jeremy, are you talking about actually building offices, or this is just a layout of cubicles?
Yeah, more of a renovation of existing space. I think that there were maybe four walls we're going to get constructed.
There was a couple offices that were going to be redesigned, some doors need to be moved, and then small construction, but more of a office layout. We did.
And I don't even think we can find pieces for our existing cubicle wall, so if we even wanted to reorient them, you know, if we don't have the pieces, I don't.
That, that sounds like a lot of money to me, to have your office furniture laid out when, if you go to an office furniture company, they will do that as part of their service.
This is, there are, again, there's a few office designer changes that have to happen, so maybe the structure for, I'm not sure on the offices, you're adding.
So I mean, if it's architectural time to redesign and do HVAC and electrical and stuff for actual office build-out, okay. But if it's more of a.
It's a mixture of.
Cubicle environment, for lack of a better word, that just sounds like a lot.
Yeah, no, there is.
I would just encourage you to look at it. That's, that's all I'll say.
Sure. Yeah, no, it's just, you know, I think we're adding at least two, two main off, or two new offices to the, into our space, and then also adding a, adding, I think, three cubicles and reorienting a lot of the, a couple of the existing offices as is.
I can, we can redesign to, to, we can discuss that further if you need.
Sure. Yeah, we can take it off, but yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That was it? That's all, yeah?
All right. Thanks. Scott?
Good morning.
So I just wanted to update you. You saw the resolution today authorizing the scanning manager and the technician. So we're moving forward. I know that IT has, we have some of the computers and some of the equipment already. We talked to Toshiba last week, last Friday, about the lease of the two scanners and a copier. So I should be getting a call on that here within the next, probably this week sometime. And I know that Rhonda is currently working on the job description, so. And we have the, the data lines installed in the basement of Sixty-Cupole Square where they're gonna start. So I hope if we can get employees, I think we can be up and running by August, sometime in August. So we're moving forward with that. GS Snyder will be coming in mid-July to do a appraisal of the professional building. So we'll need to make a decision then, once, once we get the appraisal back, how we want to proceed with that. If, I know that currently the Board of Education has to lease through the middle of next year. Question is, is do we want to go ahead and sell the building, auction it, or do we want to use a court authority to sell the building? Or do we want to possibly let the city take it, purchase it, and let their CICA do it, handle it? So there are some decisions that will be need to be made there, but obviously the first step is the appraisal. As far as a courthouse goes, our contingency is still, remains about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Yesterday, we met, Bulletin fourteen, which was a bulletin for all the changes in the eighteen forty-one courthouse, has been finalized. So that four hundred and eleven thousand dollars really is, can be used for any unknowns in the eighteen forty-one courthouse. I believe that, that most of the other issues have been addressed, and.
So the restrooms, everything is all settled?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep, it's all set. We are getting some small changes, like I know yesterday, the courts toured the, the new courthouse, and they, when we originally met with the courts, they did not want swinging doors between the gallery and the area where the defendants and the attorneys sit. Yesterday, they indicated that they changed their mind. So we need to, so we'll have some little changes like that. I don't know. We're getting a cost, a quote on that. Had we done that at the beginning, it'd probably be a couple hundred bucks, now it's probably a couple thousand dollars.
Okay.
But we'll get that figured out. We are still on schedule. The furniture will probably be going in sometime in October. We'll start moving furniture in. We've got the benches and the gallery, that's set, the jury chairs.
Did they figure out a way of getting the benches in?
The fourteen foot six will sit up the stairwell, so.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
They will sit. I am not carrying.
Carefully.
Okay. So they're gonna take them up in pieces and then assemble them once they get it, get them in, right?
Yeah, okay. All right. All righty.
So, and as far as the furniture goes, we've got, I'm getting, I've got two departments that I'm waiting on the number of actual office chairs that they need. Once we get that, we can finalize the actual furniture that is being requested. NV5 has done a great job for us as far as identifying furniture that we can move. So once we get the, the final furniture count, desks, chairs, et cetera, we can get quotes, and then we can look at what that cost is, and then we can make adjustments as necessary. So everything is going well. I know that it's, people have been asking if it's gonna be a grand opening. Yes, probably November sometime. We can probably schedule it, and we can start working on it. I talked to Nancy, the architect, and Jake, who's the construction manager, and he said that would probably be a good time for some kind of a grand opening. So, so we'll start working on getting that put together. Probably have Brian, Brian work on it at some point in a few weeks.
When is the brick up so it's not orange anymore and you don't hear the orange components?
That's gonna start next, in July?
Their facade is a couple weeks behind schedule, but it'll be put on notice by Willbank to get more folks out. I answered some problems with the product coming to the site. They're making the wrong pieces, so we have a lot of pieces. There's the wrong pieces, so that we're going back and trying to figure that piece out and starting up.
So, so those are the, the cast pieces that go around the windows and door frames and...
The cast on that's going up on the building now, the first twelve feet of the building, that lower section, the core brick, as well, they have, they're displaying for some more pieces that come in, and the brick should be starting soon.
I also, I also wanted to bring something up, just so the public's aware, that when we're talking about scanning, it actually, it's, we're calling it records retention, because that... that really is the focus of this. This is about retaining records, not just scanning. That would be like calling IT department keyboardists. So, let's not focus on the input, let's focus on what the whole idea is about records retention. And they have to follow the law. And obviously, we're going to have, Rhonda's going to be overseeing that operation, make sure that we are in compliance with the Ohio Byes Code, as well as the needs of the department. And it really is about records retention and complying with the law, but also reducing the cost and the space used for needless documents. And I think it's been long needed, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it. Just to make it clear to the public, we're just not talking about a bunch of people scanning stuff. That's one of the, one of the steps. But we have also making sure that we have to identify the appropriate materials, and how they are basically, basically either disposed of or retained. So, this is, we'll make it clear to the public.
Yeah, man, that's a good point. Because we have a lot of records that are stored off-site that we're paying for.
Yes.
We're paying for that space.
Yep.
And then if records have to be accessed, then we're paying for employees to go, drive to, whether it's Cleveland, or Columbus, or here locally, grab the records, bring the records back. So it'll, it'll be a lot more efficient, it will reduce, actually reduce costs in those locations, and it will have a central area that individuals can then go in, and then you get records from.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
All right.
Sure. Stephen, do you have anything for us?
As you're aware, the north staircase here is going out to bid. We have the construction documents came back this week, so I'll probably be sending a resolution next week to go out to bid for that. As of right now, the cost is looking about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for construction, and about a seventy-thousand-dollar heating system to keep us from salping those stuffs to make them go bad again in the future. The other thing is, is that I would like to bring a resolution for repaving Sixty Public Square's parking lot. We've gotten three bids for that, so it'll be about twenty-eight thousand dollars, I do believe is what our little bid was. So I'll also be presenting a resolution, if that is okay with you, next week-
Sure.
-for the resurfacing, and then the apron construction for Sixty Public Square. Okay?
All right.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Amy?
I brought with me that letter that we had drafted to Mrs. Navotny. I thought she might actually stay after the meeting, but I'm just-
I'm sorry, I should have brought you up.
No problem, but just to characterize the circumstances of her property, it's an unfortunate situation. There's two-hundred-and-sixty acres from the north side of one sixty-two that drain towards one sixty-two. They pass under one sixty-two in two forty-eight-inch diameter pipes. So two four-foot pipes carry the agricultural runoff and natural drainage area from the north side of eight, two, one sixty-two, excuse me, under the roadway. And it discharges into a stream that crosses from like the northwest to the southeast of Mrs. Navotny's property, and through a pond that exists in her backyard that, I guess at the time the house was constructed, that stream routed through the pond. It may have provided some kind of wet weather detention, certainly not enough based on the size of the pond and the proximity to the home. But it has silted in over the years. And you can see, for example, the discharge lines from the homes gutters and downspouts are buried under the silt in the pond. So it restricts certainly the amount of roof runoff that can make its way into that storage area. She also has a sump pump that discharges into the pond. And when the pond becomes submerged, as, as the water continues to build, her sump pump discharge line is submerged. So that prevents the evacuation of the water from her basement. So Dan had provided detail that showed how that could be amended, so that it discharged higher above the ground, so it would be free discharging then, and not submerged, as a means of potentially helping with the flooding in the basement. Mrs. Navotny mentioned the culverts under her drive. So there's the main house, and then there's a gravel drive back to a barn. And there are two fifteen-inch diameter pipes that carry that creek water. So if you envision the two forty-eight-inch pipes bringing water across, there's only two fifteen-inch diameter pipes beneath the driveway. So what happens is when that water level builds and gains momentum, it's taken some of the gravel from the driveway as well, depositing it in the stream, you know, downstream. So, you know, for a number of reasons, that has silted in. There is vegetation downstream. Eric Hange wasn't with us the day we were out there, but ODOT was. And they're gonna work with FECHCO. They just finished Jeremy's construction project out there. And they're gonna do some additional reditching on the north side of one sixty-two. There was not an existing ditch on the south side of one sixty-two, but ODOT committed to Mr. and Mrs. Navotny that they would consider putting in a ditch on the south side of one sixty-two to provide a little bit of relief, just from the road runoff that comes down, actually all the way from like the west side of the circle. You know, it comes down one sixty-two.
But Amy, that's discharged from their property, not coming into their property. Is that fair?
In part, some of that, so, some of that road runoff does come onto their property. It sheets on, not, not from the two forty-eight-inch pipes, but it sheets off the roadway into the front yard area. And then Eric had been out, and he had suggested that he could be available in helping to draft a letter asking for voluntary participation by the folks downstream to help clean out the ditch line and so forth, to allow that water to be a little bit more free-moving. And made some recommendations, too, to adjust their mowing practices, and, you know, to install some vegetation known to offer benefits in flood-prone conditions. So, between Sharon Township, Deanne Wohlhoit, and his team, myself, ODOT, and Eric Hange, we believed we were offering everything that was within our authority, you know, to offer. But certainly, if she's provided additional information, we'd be happy to continue to revisit the issue.
So as far as you're dealt with, we obviously are not legally responsible for all the drains of all, all waterways, as she seemed to be saying. At this point, we're, we are trying to work with her within the jurisdiction we have for the roadways, the drainage areas. ODOT's working with it, as well as, as recommendations that she can make herself on her property and help assist. But as you indicated, there's so much water coming in from the north there, that it does create problems. And over the years, as you pointed with sedimentation and silt, it's just backed up.
Right.
Yeah, so it sounds to me like there are design conditions and maintenance conditions that are causing a lot of a problem.
Right.
And-
So, so I just wanted to-
It's a problem, they need to deal with it, right?
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I should have had you up earlier on that. Sorry, I'd forgotten that you were going to be prepared. Holly, do you have anything? All right. Anyone else? Oh, yes.
Sorry for overlooking this. I get so nervous when I stand at a podium. I don't know why. I've been doing this for how long? If you look at the second sheet of the handout, you'll see that we have twenty-five call-outs to date. And many of them are for fire investigation team. FIU is actually Fire Investigation Unit, and that's a county-wide team. So what I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that if any department or the county might have a vehicle, right now, what FIU is doing is using their personal vehicles. And I think everybody maybe at some point has heard through the news that there's legislation out there when it comes to fires and cancer-causing issues, right, with being in a burning structure and/or being in the aftermath of a burning structure. So what we're looking to do is outfit FIU with a vehicle that's just for them. They're not putting their equipment or their clothing in their personal vehicle. And then one of the things, in some discussion over the last number of weeks, is that the Chipwall location, our hope is to, even through a grant possibly, to be able to have a washing machine that has, I don't know the right word, extrication essentially of the gray water of their clothing then, so that we're not sending them home, or again, or putting that clothing in their personal vehicle. So if anybody has something, that might be excess inventory that would go to auction, if it would be something that the department would let us to consider for FIU, that would be great. And then with assistance with flooding, I think that EMA over the years has been a big part of a lot of the flooding in Medina County. And I can certainly confirm that water is, is people's property. There's nothing that we can do. And for, even for a declared disaster, whether it's a gubernatorial or a presidential declaration, even through reimbursement process with declared disasters, there is nothing that we can do to improve people's personal property and creeks. And creeks are meant to change. And I think the one word that she was looking for was repairing corridor. Those are on each side of the banks of a creek. And the width of the repairing corridor, and when creek beds fill up with silt, as Amy described, creeks are meant to move. They're meant to change, they're not meant to stay the same all the time. And we've been through many conversations with property owners after a very heavy flood, where a neighbor's tree rushes downstream and ends up in somebody else's creek, and then they, they think that they shouldn't be responsible. And it's a very difficult conversation to tell a homeowner, "You now own your neighbor's tree." It's not something that they want to hear, but it's true. But through some FEMA programs, I'd be happy to sit down and maybe help alleviate a little bit of the tension, and add to confirming some of what we already know. Maybe some different information from FEMA resources might be beneficial for that property owner. I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Now, who actually staffs in the firing investigation units?
All the fire departments.
So each of them have basically, and so they get called out, and they just-
The same way with the water team, or the rope team. FIU is, is its various personnel from the fire, from the post-bail of fire departments.
Got it. Right.
You can see that they're very active. And then Bob Burris, if anybody knows that name, Medina City's been around for a very long time.
Right.
He's a team leader. So oftentimes, he's using his personal vehicle-
Right.
-for our work. We don't want him to do that. We would like to be able to outfit them properly, and make sure that they're, again, not taking their soiled clothes home.
Now, this is, this is public record, correct?
Yeah.
So there was a fire at the Gazette on the first of June?
There was.
Oh, wow. Didn't even read about it in the paper even. Sorry, but I had to notice.
Something more newsworthy that day. I don't know.
Okay. Wow, just shaking your head. All right. All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
All right. Anybody else? Bill?
U.S. News and World Reports, Medina County is the seventy-seventh healthiest county in the country, despite our flooding. And Delaware County was number ten down in Ohio.
Yeah.
So that's, that's great. They evaluated it in like ten different factors, and, you know, one of our lowest ones was housing, which was interesting, one of our lowest scores.
Yes.
But we did well. So it's a nice place to live.
Well, it is. Yeah. It'd be nice. Actually, we probably should have brought up when Krista was here. So, yeah, that's-
Health department, so forth. So, all right. Holly?
I just wanted to say that I met with Mr. Fox when he became the new Director of Community Action Wayne Medina. So I really appreciate that your department is collaborating with them for the space. Much needed. Thank you.
I think, I wanted to bring up for discussion, the employment survey, the employees satisfaction survey. I know we had sent out a draft for you to take a look at. I want to thank, you know, Amy and Holly and Scott, as well as Rhonda and Brian, for working on that, and the input regarding that. Met with the department heads briefly last week to kind of go through it. We've got some changes, based on recommendations. We would like to get that out with your approval this week, so we can hit people before they head out for the Fourth of July weekend, or even take some extended vacations that are scheduled. I do have a draft letter. If you all just take a look at it, make whatever changes, we'd like to send that out with it, asking that, obviously, for them, their participation. We still have to decide as to how long we want to give, we want to ask the employees, these are county commissioner employees, to provide the input on the survey. I just have it sometime here in July. I don't know whether we want to give just a couple weeks, or even with, there are people on holidays and coming back. So, any thoughts, or at this point, we'll let it?
I would either, I would do it for a couple of weeks, and in, I would suggest that we do it after next week. Because if we send it out next week during the holiday week, it's awful.
No, we're gonna send it this week. We're gonna send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
This is going by, this is actually-
I would give you three weeks to cover vacations completely.
Got it.
Yeah, because there's, I think, a fair number of people that'll be out next week.
Yeah, we're actually, either to send it out today or tomorrow. We've actually gonna do it electronically.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right. Super.
But, yeah, but in the event that somebody took an extended two-week vacation, three weeks would at least cover.
And we'll be sending out reminders for those that don't submit. But this is pure, this is, they will be anonymous. And we're asking, obviously, for their candid input on a number of issues, looking at the workplace, the workplace trends. And we're obviously looking to get some input on, well, on the workplace, of what they're looking at. And we, I think overall, we, we see our people as your number-one resource. This is how we provide public service, and we want to make sure that our investments in the future go to retain the good people we've got. And-
I had read your letter before, and it sounds good.
All right. Very good. Or thank you. I've got nothing else. And we don't have a request for anything, no executive session. So I guess we will, we will adjourn. And then we will reconvene at one o'clock for a work, a work session on the ARP.
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock, sorry. Eleven o'clock was missing on one. So-
So we're going to just recess and then continue this meeting at eleven?
Yeah, as part of a work session.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. We had it advertised. We could do it that way, correct? Okay. With that, we're done. And if you don't join us, everybody have a good Fourth of July Independence Day. Stay safe and enjoy the weather.
Steve?
Yes?
You don't need Medina TV to stay.
No.